Good evening, and welcome to the Ashland Select Board for Wednesday, February 5th, 2025. And I'm just pausing because we have not switched yet on cable, Mackie. Many of our members here have been getting concerns. We saw a statement go out from Jim Adams, our superintendent of schools. And I want the residents of Ashland to know that our focus, as we hear these things come down, is going to be working with what we can do locally to keep our residents safe, help to try to keep them calm, and do what we can from a local level to support our residents in anything and everything that they are dealing with. We are later in our meeting going to have a discussion about some of the potential financial impacts that we are aware of, and who knows, those might not come to fruition, but we'll have that discussion. But just know that we are going to work locally and hopefully regionally and across the state of Massachusetts. I think Massachusetts is in a different position than some other states, but we are going to work to make sure that our residents are feeling safe, that our students, that are elderly, that every resident is feeling as safe in whatever way we can here locally. So if you have questions, if you have concerns, reach out to any of us, reach out to Michael, reach out to the superintendent of schools, reach out to your school committee members, if you have questions or concerns specifically for you and your family. So, thank you. On that note, we're going to go to citizens' participation. Anything that anyone has, give us your name and address. And Mackie, we can't see the full Zoom screen, so if there's anyone on Zoom that wants to raise their hand to talk to us as well. But you can go ahead. Perfect. Okay. Go ahead, Mark. Yep?
Okay. Good evening, Mark. The Sony 119 Main Street. That was, is part of the reason why I came up, it was that, but through the chairperson, through the town manager, all that was put on your latest management post is that other half of what is being said, the freezes and stuff like that, that you put in a big, Mr. Town Manager, I'm saying, to understand that what the federal government did the freezes on, you put on your header, heading part of the town manager report online. And it was basically everything from the schools to business, to the ARCA funds and stuff like that.
Right. So, Mark, as I said, we do have it later in our agenda. So some of it was addressed in Michael's newsletter, and we're going to be discussing it later in the meeting under Town Manager Reports, some of those federal funding things and other potential impacts that we're seeing. So if you could hang out until then, we can go into further discussion rather than just addressing your one question, please.
Okay, now flip around quickly on this part. On February 11th, zoning board has another public hearing on 1060 Main Street. I've been thinking, I have almost all the zoning codes at home and trying to work it up. I'm gonna try and see if I can get a paragraph or so, upgrading the zoning codes just for 1060 there, to understand that it can mix in housing and business, and to understand better what the town can see forward. In case the zoning board cannot do anything either because of the freeze, I want to stay ahead of the curve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that. There is no one else? Is there anyone online for citizens' participation? I'm not seeing any hands or waving of anybody. Okay. We're going to go into our first scheduled presentation, and this is on the Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's being presented by MAPC, Metropolitan Area Planning Council. You want to come up, introduce, and... Yes, we can get that slide back up. If we can get the slide up on the screen above us, that'd be great, Mackie, and also shared online.
Thank you very much for having me before the board tonight. My name is Martin Pillsbury. I'm the director of the Environmental Planning Department at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC. And if you don't know, we are the regional planning agency to which Ashland and a 100 other towns and cities in greater Boston belongs to. And we provide a range of planning services for communities from transportation to economic development, to housing, land use, and what we're talking about here tonight. Hazard mitigation planning, which is a program that we'll discuss in a little bit more detail here, just to give a broad context, this presentation tonight is for public information. There's nothing we're asking for the board to take action on tonight. But when we come back with a fully drafted out plan in a few months, there will be a point when the plan will be approved by FEMA and you'll be asked to adopt the plan. But that will be the very end of the process. We're in the middle of the process now, and we want to make sure that a broader audience in the community is aware of this plan and has an opportunity to ask questions and give us comments. So I'm assuming I can advance this here. So this is a brief overview of what we're going to talk about. We already gave an introduction, background, talk about the planning process, talk about what information we've heard and gathered already, and then what the next steps in the process will be. So I mentioned MAPC, the Regional Planning Council. You can see on this map here that it is 101 cities and towns, and we're working with a number of towns to do similar projects like this. And Ashland, as you can see, is part of the Metro West group, as you well know. We've worked with some of the other communities around this area in these kinds of similar plans as well. So a little bit of background about hazard mitigation plans. I think, you know, many people are familiar with comprehensive plans, master plans, open space plans. Hazard mitigation plans aren't exactly a household term, and everyone's very familiar with this. Part of what I like to, because it's kind of a specialized plan. But in today's world where we have more threats of different kinds of weather events, storms, floods, winter events, it's becoming an increasingly important program. So we want more people to be aware of it and have an opportunity to even comment on it and have some input into it as we do the plan. So this whole process is actually, arises out of a federal law that was passed in the year 2000 called the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, which essentially charged FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, with developing a program that would help communities plan in advance of disasters happening. FEMA had already, and always had been there after it happens, responding, recovery after the disaster. But they wanted FEMA to be able to, and the nation, states, towns, and cities, to be able to take stock of what your hazards are and take actions before they happen in order to maybe make your community more resilient and less vulnerable. So that's the philosophy behind it. Under this law, FEMA set up a planning process which has a goal that every city and town in the whole country do a plan like this. And a good number of them did, not every, but a good number of them done. In Massachusetts, probably 90-plus percent of our communities have these plans. In the metro area for MAPC, all of us do. The planning process is set up that assumes that, you know, data changes over time, you do a plan, it gets out of date, and so there's a five-year renewal cycle that FEMA likes to encourage communities to do, to revisit the plan, refresh it with new data. There's new technology between plans, things change quickly these days. So there's better computer technology to assess things, there's better mitigation measures that can be thought about for what the community might do. So for that reason, actually, Ashland is in the middle here of doing a plan update from an existing plan you have already. In fact, if you can see on the right side of the screen, your last plan, which MAPC helped you do at that time as well, was approved by FEMA in 2017. And there was a plan before that in around 2011 or so, 10, I can't remember exactly right now, going back. This is actually your third plan in the series of going back to when this program got started. So this is Hazard Mitigation 3.0 for the town of Ashland. The other thing I'll mention, the last bullet on the left side, one of the benefits of having a plan is that it makes a community eligible to apply for some pretty significant grants to do projects on the ground, to actually mitigate drainage and flooding problems and other sorts of things. So you have to have an approved plan by FEMA before that FEMA will then turn around and give you a grant for a project. That's the prerequisite, it makes it a prerequisite. So the plan, having a plan is not a requirement. There's no penalty for not having a plan, there's no fine or anything like that, but you don't garner the benefit. There's kind of a carrot, not a stick here. You don't garner the benefit of being able to get some of these grants if you don't have an approved plan. So when we're done with this plan update in the middle of this year, 2025, you'll get a five-year plan that will take you to 2030, sounds very futuristic, I know. And the town will be eligible in each of those next five years to be able to apply for these grants. Many communities have taken advantage of this grant program. You can get six-figure grants and plus, depending on the kind of project you're looking at and what the needs are. So back up for a minute to talk about what do we mean by hazard mitigation. Like I say, even the term is not something that is in common vocabulary necessarily. So first of all, we're dealing with natural hazards, which you see on the right side of the screen. FEMA has a lot of programs, some of them might have to do with man-made hazards, chemical spills, radiation, of course, homeland security, terrorism, all of that. This is a whole corner of FEMA that's just focused on natural hazards, but it's focused on every category of natural hazard that a community might experience, from those that are common and frequent, like flooding, to those that are pretty infrequent and not very likely to happen, like earthquakes, but still, if it's more than a 0% chance, it'll have some role in the plan. The ones that are more common and more experienced in any community will have more focus, will be more of a focus on those, but they're all in the plan. On the left side of the screen, you see here a kind of a, just a working, simple definition, what we mean by hazard mitigation, reducing impacts from natural hazards through strategies that include policies, programs, and projects. So those drainage projects that I talked about, that's part of the picture, but that's not the whole picture. There's other things that you'll see can fit into mitigation, such as different kinds of local regulations on how development occurs and where it occurs and that sort of thing. And the lower-left side of this screen is sort of like the starting questions we start out with when we do a plan. We say, what are the preventative actions that the community is already taking? Because you've been living with these hazards for decades. It's not like this is a new thing. It's just like, we want to take stock of what you have in place already. From there, we can say, where are the gaps? Where are the things that could be improved? Where are the things that could be modernized? And that will lead us to the second question, what additional actions can be taken? And the answer to that question becomes the core of this plan, a set of recommended actions that you can map out over the next five years. Some of them will be long-term and won't happen immediately, some of them may be lower-hanging fruit, a whole combination of those measures. So this graphic is intended to show what the FEMA program is designed to do, is to interrupt this cycle, to slow this cycle down. We could probably never completely stop this cycle, as long as there are storms out there, but to sort of like interrupt this cycle that has often been experienced in many communities of, you know, having a disaster, causing damage, rebuilding, and then, you know, rinse, wash, repeat, do the whole thing all over again, time and time again. So that's kind of like the idea, is to get in place measures that will reduce the damage that's occur. You can't stop the storms from happening or the other natural events from happening, but can you get a little more out of harm's way in your community to reduce the damages that they would cause? And another thing to think about is looking ahead to the future. These hazard mitigation plans, when they started back in the year 2000, they mostly were based upon assessing a community's hazards and what's your vulnerability based on the record of the past events. And we still do that. That's still very important, like how many floods, where have they been, how many blizzards and nor'easters, et cetera, were there earthquakes, whatever, in some communities that's more important than others. But like, that only gives you the picture of what the past was. What we now have is the ability to look forward a little bit more, because we have tools and models that have been brought about in the last decade or so, that give us some idea of where future patterns of precipitation may be, where future patterns of temperature may be due to the climate change, where things are not really just static, but they're dynamic. So the curve is like going up like this in some cases, and we can, when you look at the future, you're not looking at measured empirical information. It is a model, so you don't want to say that's exactly what's going to happen, but you see the trend. You see the tendency that if we've had these many floods before, we might likely have more of them more frequently in the future. So let's, it just informs what you want to be prepared for and what you want to think about when you do your hazards. So hazard mitigation is not one technique or one method of dealing. It's actually a broad umbrella term, and we'd like to break that down into some components that you see here on this list. A few of them are prevention. So if you can prevent the hazard, the... A few of them are prevention, so if you can prevent the hazard, the damage from occurring in the first place, that's always the best thing, right? That old accent, that old expression about, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And so to the extent that you can think about how, how and where the development occurs with respect to where the hazard areas are, like floodplains, et cetera, the more you can direct development away from the areas that are great, a greater hazard, the more you'll be reducing future hazards and future damages. Then there's property protection, because we have an awful lot of property that has been developed over the past many years, decades, even centuries in New England, that got built in what we now know to be floodplains and other areas. I mean, it's not, it's, it's, it's not unusual, our communities were often started out as mills, right along the rivers and built out from there, and now we look at that and go, oh, that's the low spot, that's where it floods, that's exactly where we built, that's exactly where it floods. And so we have to have a way to coexist, continue to coexist with having development in areas that we now know to be, have some hazard risk associated with them. So different kinds of property protection for what's there already is another component of this potentially. Public education is important, because it's not just about the physical structures we build and the infrastructure, but it's making, making folks who live in the community, who own property, homeowners, small businesses, et cetera, aware of what the risks are for different kinds of hazards and what kind of methods that they can use themselves or their own property management, and what is available from the town, from the state, that may help in certain circumstances. So that, this is part of that effort, just to get the word out about this kind of planning so a broader public know about it. Natural resources protection, thinking about the functions that wetlands and watersheds and floodplains serve us in terms of absorbing the floodwater. I like to call this one just letting Mother Nature do the best for, for us that we can and staying out of the way. So that's where some of your wetlands regulations and floodplains and open space protection come in as like on the side of the ledger that's trying to prevent more damage. Structural projects are the ones that are addressed at trying to deal with the damage that's already happening. Infrastructure that's old or outdated, or the town has grown and it's undersized now, a lot of this is often drainage, infrastructure, culverts, and that sort of thing. And these are the kinds of projects, if you identify the need for some of them in certain places in a community, that could potentially be funded by those FEMA grants or some other kinds of grants. And finally, emergency services protection. The idea here is that your emergency services have various facilities and vehicles and equipment, communication systems, and you want to make sure those are really hardened and protected, they're located in safe areas, because you want them to be able to function so that when the rest of the community may be having damages, they're still operable, they can provide that service and that aid. If they go out, they can't help anybody else. And there were examples, there was a police department up in the town, it was North Reading, that used to flood, and they had their communication systems at the lower level, and they would go out, and they got a FEMA grant and put in a solution around the drainage area. So that's an example. I also like to, to draw the analogy, when you're on an airplane, they say, if the masks come down, put, put the mask on first and then help everyone around you. It's like, keep the emergency services intact, so prioritize that. So that's really where that comes from. So how do we do, go about doing a plan like this? Well, we've, we've laid out a roadmap of holding a number of meetings with a town's hazard mitigation team, and I'll talk about the members of the team in a minute. Chief Roby is here tonight, and he's been leading the, the team. We hold the series of meetings where we gather local information, we put it into a format that we know is the format of the plan that FEMA requires. There's a certain very prescriptive way that these plans have to be designed, but the content, the local information, we don't know that at MAPC, that has to come from local officials, from fire departments, from planners, conservation, health, et cetera, all of the different boards. So we have a multi-departmental team that's been meeting. We've actually held three meetings of it so far in the last few months, starting last July, and in this timeline here, we're at this, where we are, what we call the first public meeting. What we'll be doing after this is holding a final meeting of the team where they'll actually come up with the recommended actions for the plan, or what will be the mitigation steps they would recommend the town to pursue in the next five years. Once we put the whole plan together and have an actual draft plan, just a few months from now in the spring, we'll actually release that plan for public to be able to see it, put it up on the website, and we'll hold another public meeting where there can be comments and questions about the plan itself, when people actually see the plan, and give it, you know, a more detailed picture of what's actually in there and give us any comments they might have. Once we've had a public review and the draft plan is ready to be submitted, it'll go to MEMA and FEMA, who will then review the plan, make sure it meets all of their criteria, they have a lot of very specific checklists they go through, and once they're done with it, they'll approve the plan, and that's when it would come back to this board for a vote of adoption. It's a fairly simple vote of adoption, but it only comes at the very end of the process when we know we have an approved plan from FEMA. So the local team, I want to really give kudos to the local team. You see on the right side here, the different members, different boards and commissions, committees that are represented on the local team. And the team has been helping us over the course of these four meetings, we've had three of the four already, to establish goals, to provide data and local expertise, and to then, what they will do at the next, next meeting is finalize the priority actions for the plan on behalf of the town. So they really are the eyes and ears on the town, putting the local, important local data into the plan that makes it very specific to, to Ashland. So the data we've gathered already and what the team has shared with us already, we can begin to talk about just a few examples. The plan includes within a number of sites that have been identified as where there are existing known flood, flooding and drainage problem areas, just a few examples here. There's a longer list in the whole plan, and every one of these sites is also mapped. And we're also looking at some other kinds of hazards besides flooding, like for instance, areas that might be subject to wildfire, you know, more of the forested and vegetated larger areas. You know, and interesting, these things go in cycles. Three or four years ago, we talked about wildfire, people go, yeah, yeah, right. And then last year, we had 6,000 acres in Massachusetts burn, the dry year we've had, right? So it's a wake-up call every once in a while, yes, we do get these things. No, we're not California, but these can be, you know, there were some pretty serious wildfires in Lynn, Salem, and around different places around here. So, and you have a lot of open land here, which is a good thing, but it's one of the things you want to think about. So we map all this information, all where all these sites are, the areas that might be subject to fires, to flooding, et cetera. You, I know you can't see it at the scale, but there's a GIS computer-based map that has all this information in it, so when you actually have the plan, you can take a much closer look at it. Just a few examples of some of the flooding sites are listed on the left here, that are, each one of them is mapped, so if you see it and hide it on the map, there'll be a little number next to it, that'll be referenced in a, in a database, you can look that site up and get the details on it. Similarly, this next map looks the same, excuse me, but it's actually another set of data that we mapped, which is critical facilities and critical infrastructure. And so there's a good 70 or 80 of those sites, if I remember correctly, and it includes things like your own municipal facilities that you rely upon, it also includes facilities in the community that might require assistance. So facilities that provide assistance and facilities that might require assistance, both sides of that coin are listed on here, that's why you see things like schools, senior centers, et cetera. And then, of course, you know, resources like dams, et cetera, you have, as you know, quite a few dams in this town. Flooding has been front and center in most of these plans, but the plans do cover the other categories of natural hazards. You see a few examples here, extreme heat, wildfires, earthquakes, you know, we've had three earthquakes in the last week. They're, they're, they're small, you know, but, you know, it was a reminder, yeah, we get these. Drought, we've had lots of droughts, you know, 2016, a really big one, a couple more not so small ones since then. So all of a sudden, drought is back on the table again, in a way that for a number of years, before that, we hadn't had a drought in 20, 20-something years. So all of a sudden, now we've had three or four of them since 2016. And extreme precipitation, just a few examples of some of the other hazards that the plan will cover. And of course, we can't leave without talking about nor'easters, our beloved New England nor'easters. These are just a few examples of some of the bigger ones we've had in the last decade. And those affect coastal communities, but they really can affect inland communities with high winds and snow as well. So the other thing we looked at is what are some of the mitigation measures that you have in place already? This, that first question on the first slide, what's the town doing already? Well, we go into actually taking stock under each hazard category of different kinds of measures you have in place already, whether they're actual physical infrastructure measures or whether they're things like zoning and bylaw and regulations that help manage risks, et cetera. So we, we take stock of where all those are so that we can then say, what else can the community do? And that will be pivoting to what the next and final step of the plan will be this spring, instead of actually, what else can the community do that would strengthen the plan? And to get to us there and to help have an opportunity for a broader public input, we've launched a, a community-wide survey that's in an online platform, so that people can go online, you're using that link, or you can using that QR code, and this will be put up on the town website and sent around through social media, this, but this is the first time we're putting it out publicly here. And it's fairly simple, user-friendly survey that only has four or five questions, it probably takes less than 10 minutes to complete it, but it tries to ask people, what are your concerns about, which kinds of hazards, if there's something going on in your neighborhood or any of these that you're concerned about, that you want to make the town aware of? What do you think the town could be doing or should be doing to help, help address? That's kind of the, the general level, to be able to solicit some ideas from people where the, where we should go with this plan. So we use the input from this survey as we finalize the plan as well. So it's going to be out there, we encourage folks to take it, it's easy to take, and that's, that's almost the end of it, except for, if you have time, we're willing to, we have, willing to answer questions. End of April. Yes, just because we'll be wrapping up the plan probably in May, and so, so we're holding it open as long as, until we're actually starting to pull everything together.
Sorry, thank you. So the survey will be open till the end of April, thank you. I will open it up to questions from the board. Joe, go ahead, jump right in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation, very, very informative and very detailed, I appreciate that. I don't know how this relates to, you know, natural disasters. I noticed that you didn't mention, well, it says conservation, and under the conservation title, would beavers be something that would be considered a disaster thing? Because in our neighborhood, and I, and I know someone has already been out and taken, taken a look at a 14-acre area that has been completely devastated by flooding, and along with that, there is a railroad trestle that runs right by there, and it's been undermined severely.
Right.
And we keep letting the railroad company know that, you know, you better go out there and keep checking that, because they're back and they're doing, you know, exactly what they're doing. So any grant monies that would be considered available, maybe to help restore or replace some of that trestle that's been eroded because of the flooding, is that something that may be available?
Well, first of all, the big question, are items like beavers a hazard in this plan? Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
You know, the flooding doesn't just have to be my natural causes or whatever, we see in almost every town we talk to, beavers are a problem somewhere in the town with that, you know, it's an unintended side effect of their activity.
Yeah.
And so, yes, absolutely, and in anywhere, anywhere it's known that there's a beaver flooding problem, that will be actually documented in the plan, put on the map, described, and that's part, already in the list we have, there's a few cases where beavers are part of the picture, or one of the causes of the problem.
Great, thank you.
Whether there could be a grant to then resolve the problem, if some piece of infrastructure is threatened, possibly, yes. Now, if it's a railroad under, the question becomes like, whose infrastructure is it? If it's the railroad's infrastructure, the town isn't going to be applying for a grant, but they could, and maybe they should, or somehow just do the work, whether they get a grant for it or not. So, yeah, it's great that you, I think you should keep making them aware of it, because these things can fall on deaf ears sometimes, there's so many other things to be dealing with. It's good to be aware of that, for sure.
Conservation agent is on top of it, and I greatly appreciate all the effort that she's been doing for us, so thank you. Thank you for the presentation, appreciate the answer.
Yep.
Randy, go ahead.
So thank you for the presentation. This was something that I wasn't aware of that we've done before, so, in fact, like I'm, like, making notes, and I'm curious if, and this might be more of a question for us, is the 2017 plan out there, somewhere where people can take a look at it? I'm curious, like, what the recommendations were in 2017?
It's a, it's a good start to look at that. It should be on your website.
I'm sure it's someplace, whether it's easily defined, it might be good to make sure it is easy to find.
I mean, we're starting by looking at that plan. Every time you do a plan renewal, you start with the last plan, and in fact, especially with the list of recommended actions, the first thing we do, not the first thing, but one of the things we do along the way is, what's the status of all these things we recommended in 2017? Have some of them been implemented?
Right.
Have some of them been partially implemented, because they're just long-term and they take a long time to do?
Yeah.
And have some of them not been implemented, which you're going to find, these are long, difficult problems. Now we're doing a new plan for the next five years, does the town want to carry over any unfinished projects from the last plan into the new plan as a starting point? In most cases, most cases, that's, that's what we'll do.
Yeah.
There could be a few measures that, on second thought, seven years later, nah, that our priorities have changed, we won't carry it, but that's exactly what the team will decide on behalf of the town.
Okay.
And then we want to build into the plan for 2025, new measures beyond what might have been in the last one, things that have come up since then.
Right.
So maybe there's a beaver area that wasn't a problem in 2017, but we now know it is, that could go.
Or a dam that's a little bit older and things like that.
And we know, we know climate change has accelerated and things have, things have changed.
That puts another spin on it, that's exactly right.
So, you know, when we talk about droughts, and when we talk about flooding, and we've talked about, I mean, we know that we've seen many more frequent issues than we used to see, you know, back in 2017, so I think it's really great that.
In the world of hydrology in general, what we're seeing is more of the extremes. We're seeing more extreme rainstorms, two or three inches of rain in a short time, and then we're seeing more droughts in between. It used to be more evened out, right?
Yeah.
We're getting less average and more highs on both ends.
Right.
And the highs on both ends are the ones that cause stress on the community, that cause problems, right? And cause, cause, cause costs, et cetera. So that's what this plan is helping to hopefully identify.
Okay, thank you, and, and thank you to Chief Roby and everyone that's been involved in kind of working on this.
Yeah, the team has done a great job, absolutely.
So we're, we're, I think, you know, hopefully we can be as well-positioned as possible.
Yep, that's the idea.
Yep, so thank you. Claudia Makita?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to ask a couple of questions. It would be interesting, I think, to look at what, if we've applied for grants in the past, and maybe that would be part of what's posted, and then what, what, when you say that we're, we'd be eligible for grants with this in place, are they all, are the grants all based on some sort of mitigation that you, that would be the grant?
This category of grants are, there are other grants out there you could get as a community, but this is focusing on what you could do for mitigation.
Okay, all right, and, well, if all that federal money remains, right?
That's the big if, of course. This, even the plan itself is being funded by federal money, so hello.
But it's through MAPC, right? So the federal funds come through, MAPC has these funds available to reach out to the different communities.
Actually, it's MEMA has the funds.
FEMA, MEMA, right.
FEMA, the funds go from FEMA to MEMA.
To MEMA.
And then MEMA writes contracts with the communities, and then the communities hire us.
Right.
So it's, it's down the chain, but ultimately traced back, it's federal dollars. Now, these are federal dollars that were allocated over a year ago, and their contracts are in place, so I don't think we're going to stop in the middle of this plan, but like the towns that are a year behind you, that are just applying for a new grant now, and in fact, there's a grant round available right now for application until next week, I'm worried about those towns, maybe those next round of grants, will they come through? It's a big question.
I think you just answered my question, so.
Right. No, we don't, we, we don't have a crystal ball, we're worried about it, though, for sure.
Well, Martin, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you to all the members of our local team. I know the first time that it was done, we had a very large team, we had, I know, one of our select board members at the time, and.
It's a pretty good-sized team this time, too. It's very robust, absolutely.
Good, good, well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And if you're watching, I ask, recommend that you go to the town website, we'll get it up so that we can, people can take the survey. I know there's a lot of surveys and stuff going on with different things, but please, a survey page, there you go. A survey page, there you go. All the surveys on one page, that's a great idea. There you go. Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. And we look forward to seeing the final plan. And again, thank you, Martin, for coming in. And I know one of your colleagues was online, so thank you all.
I was thinking, we probably should have introduced everybody who for being there, too.
Yeah, they're gone. Thank you all.
I didn't even see you there, Courtney.
Great, okay. So we have our next public hearing, but not until 8:30. So we're going to jump into old and new business. We're going to start with a discussion and vote to accept the gifted four parcels of land from Hopkinton Area Land Trust, including parcel known as MAP 18. I'm not going to read the whole thing. Do I need to read the whole thing? Okay. And the discussion and vote is to authorize me as chair to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to effectuate the acquisition of said property. A little bit of background, and I know there's some information in our packet. So these are parcels that were owned by an organization called HALT, which is the Hopkinton Area Land Trust. And when we started having discussions with them to become our CR holder for the Valentine property, they mentioned that they had these parcels and because they're in Hopkinton, they really, we're like, you know, can we donate them to Ashland? None of them are large parcels. They're really small parcels that are attached to different open space that they have. But it's small parcels, but we're willing to take them. We've already taken the vote at town meeting. We just have to do a final vote and then sign any documents. Any questions or comments?
Just one quick question, Madam Chair. The Fawn Ridge Road property, having driven up in that area, there is, there's an open piece of property at the lower end of Fawn Ridge, which is on, as you turn into Fawn Ridge from Cross, it's on the left-hand side. Is that the piece of property that we're talking about? Or is it the one, is it the piece of property that if you drive all the way up in Fawn Ridge, because it's on a hill, there are actually two houses up there? So that's not the property that we're talking about. We're talking about the lower end property.
None of these, I don't know exactly on the map.
Okay.
I know none of the parcels that they're looking to donate, that we're looking to get have any buildings on them.
Okay.
I know one of the parcels is somewhere on Cross Street. It's in Hopkinton. So there's open space. And then as part of that, it goes into Ashland. So they're giving us the portion that's in Ashland. And actually, I was having a discussion with Carl Hacken, someone who has helped with this discussion. And HALT is asking if they can keep that parcel on their map, but donate, you know, denote that it's in Ashland, because they have some walking trails, but their walking trails don't come into Ashland, so.
Got you.
It's all open space, there's no buildings on it. And they just, you know, they wanted to have property that's in Hopkinton.
For my sake of mind, I just want to make sure we're warranted. It would have been nice to get those two nice houses up there because they're over a million each, so, you know, that'd be nice to put on our tax levies.
We're not, we're not taking anything out of Hopkinton, right? We're not getting any property that's in Hopkinton, just property that they own that's in Ashland, over the line, because they've had other small, you know, because at some point, it was probably part of Hopkinton. And then when the, you know. So if I can get a motion to move that the select board accept as a gift four parcels of land from Hopkinton Area Land Trust, Inc., said parcels known as Assessor's MAP 18 Lot 0067, MAP 18 Lot 0074, and MAP 27 Lot 0100, for general municipal purposes, and Assessor's MAP 18 Lot 0142 for conservation purposes, as authorized pursuant to Article 8 of the May 1st, 2024 Annual Town Meeting, and Article 4 of the November 19th, 2024 Special Town Meeting, and further to authorize the Chair, Yolanda Greaves, to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to effectuate the acquisition of said property.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That carries five, zero, second, Brandy, you made the second, right?
I made the motion.
Okay.
Joe made the second.
Second.
Good, so I'm going to sign this and then pass it down for signature. Thank you to HALT for working with us. Done, next. Town meeting warrant is open. Notice of intent for a warrant article is due by February 28th, 2025. Jen, any else? Okay. Okay, so if you're interested in seeing the calendar, the calendar is up on the town website. So if you have something you'd like to do, we need to have notice by February 28th, 2025. So as you're talking to people, let them know that. Article guidelines, okay. Next. Discuss the process to fill the vacancies on the Board of Health and the Planning Board. I don't think there's anything in our packet about this, but I know we've been approached from the town clerk's perspective, as well as from the Board of Health and the Planning Board. Both of these need to be done by a joint meeting and vote of the Select Board and Planning Board. I believe we're looking at trying to do joint meetings with one or both of them for our second meeting in February. Might we need to go to one of their meetings? Or are we going to try and have them both come to us?
You know, it would be great if they could both come here on the 19th.
Okay.
And get that taken care of.
Okay. Great, so we've already received some resumes for the Board of Health position. And I've heard there's possibly someone for the Planning Board. If you are listening to this and you would like to be appointed, please get your information in, or has that closed already? Someone remind me. Susan, did the request for people already close? Or is it still open if they want to be appointed? It's still open. So if you're interested in Board of Health or Planning Board, you can still submit. Any other questions, thoughts, discussions? Go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that the way it works, which, you know, something that I've learned is when there's a vacancy, the person's appointed until the following election.
Correct.
And then they must, you know, if they're interested, they run for the position in that election, and it's only for whatever period of time is, remains in that.
In that term.
In that term.
Correct, correct. Good thing to point out.
I just think it's important for everybody to know that.
Right, so.
And papers were available last, the 28th, last Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, so, good point.
Yep.
If you're looking to be appointed, part of, I know for myself, one of the questions I routinely ask someone if they're, if they're appointed is, will they then be willing to run? Because if someone's taken the time to start learning, it would be good then to know that they're going to run, but, so. Anything else? Questions, comments? Okay, wonderful. Moving on, update on the tri-board meeting. So we had a questionnaire go out and we didn't find a good day during the week. So now we're asking if people are available Saturday, March 1st, and then April, Saturday, April 5th, the first Saturday of March and the first Saturday of April. I know a doodle poll went out. Susan, what was the response to that doodle poll? I think pretty good? Okay.
Yes, it was pretty good. I still have three people that I'm waiting for responses from.
Okay, so if there's anything specific you have questions about, let Michael know. I'm actually going to do a one-on-one Town Finance 101 with Makita, if anyone wants to sit in with us and be part of that discussion. Yeah.
I would also just like to say that I think in the future, because we've had such a problem trying to schedule this meeting, that maybe this needs to be something that we schedule, you know, very early on in September or, you know.
So, so my, my first request was back in the fall. I reached out to the chairs of the School Committee and Finance Committee. And partly because of things going on, it was like, there was, there was, excuse me. The response I got was, well, let's wait until January when we have more information. And then when I reached out in January initially.
Right, but that's different than, than scheduling a meeting, right? Because I remember when we two talked about it, right? We, and so what I'm saying is, maybe we should have scheduled a meeting and had some meetings on, on everybody's schedule and then, and then decide, okay, well, we, let's wait till the January time one that we've scheduled, because, just so that, I mean, because now we're going to, this is late to be talking.
Oh, believe me, I, and I would, and I would say that after, you know, as we finish up this budget cycle, we start planning for next year.
Right.
And, I mean, I.
So I say, let's just get some dates on everybody's calendars and.
Yeah, that's, that would be, that's a great recommendation, that we look at, when we get into the fall, let's, you know, and maybe it's a standing budget meeting, right? For the three boards, and if people can be there, great. And if not, but we're having a discussion.
I like that idea, a standard, a standing.
A standing budget meeting.
Budget meeting, yeah.
Right, not that we all want more meetings, but, you know, the time and energy it took to book this.
It's a great suggestion.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, great. So March 1st and April 5th, put them on your calendars and figure out location and.
You know, March 1st will be the most important, you know, depending on how March 1st goes, we might not need the April meeting, but it's good to have it on the books.
Better to have it on the books and, yeah. Or we may really need that April meeting.
Yeah, you never know.
No, no. Okay. No, we don't have a location yet, starting at nine. I think probably nine.
Either is fine with whatever.
I don't know.
Whatever's easiest for you all.
Nine o'clock, eight o'clock?
Either, either way, yeah, I mean, eight or nine is better. The earlier we start, the earlier theoretically we finish, so. Yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
Well, let's maybe put a, no, well, eight o'clock or nine o'clock?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock? Joe? Brandy? Eight, I mean.
Jen, you got it.
I would say, let's toss it out.
We should check with Brittany.
I was going to say, let's, let's check with Brittany and the other two committees and if it should be, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, check, check with Brittany. Let's go work for her, because we need to make sure she's, okay.
She's the one that's got the longest drive, too.
Right, right, okay. But I just want to make sure that, okay, we're still good. Okay, moving on. Report on MMA Annual Conference. I believe Michael and I were the only ones who attended. And it, it's always interesting. They had it at a new location this year. They've had it at the Hines in the past, which made it sort of easy. We all got our steps in. They held it at the, they held it at the Boston, Jen was there for part of it as well. They held it, they held it at the Boston Convention Center.
Manino Airport.
Manino Airport. And if you've ever been to the Boston, it was a beautiful facility. It's gorgeous. But unfortunately, they had the trade show floor at the furthest end. So if you're, if you've ever been there, you, you can come to the entrance, you have the Weston Hotel, the Omni Hotels across the street. The trade show was all the way at the end. It was so far, they actually had golf carts for people to take, so that you didn't have to walk it all the time. The timing was changed. They used to have the trade show from, on Friday all day and half of the day on Saturday. And now what they found was people would leave early on Saturday, so you'd go to try and do something on the trade show floor at noon on Saturday, and a lot of the vendors would be gone. So they shifted that and they opened the event on Thursday. They had a women's event, an interview with a mayor from Texas. It was supposed to be a great event, but it was at three o'clock on Thursday. And then they had an opening reception, starting at 4:30, again, on this trade show floor. And you, so you could spend time at the trade show and, and stuff like that. And then on Friday, they had their sessions. There were some great sessions. They had two great speakers. There was a gentleman that just talked about energy and things like that. And then, then on Saturday, they had Matt Lerman, who, at some point, I'm going to put stuff together to present to all of you, because he talked about something called courageous conversations in how to get your community to be involved and have conversations. So, so it was different because of where it was. And so part of what they have is they have what's called a Wemo, the Wemo Luncheon, which is Women-Elected Municipal Officials. Well, you're on the trade show floor. They had the general sessions next door. And then they had the Wemo Luncheon across the street at the Omni Hotel. So you had to get there. Great interview with Secretary Walsh. It was a great event. And then sessions were starting and you had to get back. It was just, I'm hoping they could try to consolidate it a little bit better next year, maybe have it at the beginning of the Convention Center, something like that, so. Maybe. I mean, overall, I had, I had a good weekend. I met a lot of my colleagues there, got to speak to a lot of different people. We had a good update on Thursday, on Friday, from the governor and lieutenant governor. Lieutenant Governor came back on Saturday as well and gave some more information. The Beacon is out for February and it has some great articles and stories about some of the information that they presented and some of the awards and things like that. So if you get a chance, go ahead and check that out, because that will give you some information as well. But. She, I mean, she talked about expanding, excuse me, Chapter 90. They talked about supporting, fully funding the schools, child, I forget the exact name, but.
Equal Opportunity.
The Equal Opportunity Act, so doing full funding there. And just from a federal level, thank you, supporting the cities and towns and how things might get impacted and, yeah. Michael, your thoughts? Jen, your thoughts on what you saw and heard and?
You know, it was a change in venue, as you mentioned, and that changed a lot of the dynamics, I thought.
Yes.
In terms of attendance, it was weird. They said that there was a, you know, almost like a record attendance.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
I didn't see that. There were a lot of elected officials there, not as many, I think, like senior-appointed officials or staff members as there usually were. But, yeah, I mean, I didn't necessarily take advantage of any of the sessions or anything, because, you know, what typically happens, I'll roll in and you'll see somebody, it's like, oh, I haven't seen you in a year. So, so that's kind of, that's kind of what happened. But it was, it was an interesting vibe.
Yeah, it was definitely.
Yeah.
It was, it was definitely had a different feel to it. And I think part of it was the space and how spread out it was.
Yeah, because usually, you know, at the Hines, it's a big building, but it's kind of stacked. And the way it's situated is, you know, you could kind of position yourself in certain places and see your colleagues and talk to them and interact with them in between sessions and everything. You didn't get that opportunity in this venue. And they are, you know, I talked to Adam there and he said they're going to.
So Adam Chapdeline is the executive director of the Mass Municipal Association.
And so they will be having it there again next year, as the Hines is undergoing renovations. And, you know, I do hope, look, I mean, you got to try things and try to mix it up and see what works, see what doesn't. But from what I know right now, I'll be happy to move back to the Hines.
Yeah, if they can make it more compact in the convention, because what happened was the trade show was all the way at the end. You had to go all the way across the street. And then even, they have some meeting rooms there? But there was one meet, there was one breakout session that I went to. I was on the trade show floor, had to go up, had to go all the way back to the other end of the Convention Center on the other side. So they need to, they need to consolidate, if they want it, I know they're going to stay there next year, they need to try and consolidate it.
Oh, but should we talk about the highlight of the weekend? You guys know the highlight?
No.
I won a Lego set.
Oh.
That was the highlight, yeah.
I never win anything.
Like the highlight. Let's see, what was the highlight?
It was a nice Lego set. It was the downtown city one. Yeah, I had to get, so it was at the trade show.
New York City? Is it, is it New York City?
No. It had double poles, Joe, double poles. But, yeah, you had to guess the number of Lego, oh, this was funny. You had to guess the number of Legos in this jar, and I guessed a number. And, you know, I get my text, "Oh, you know, you won." So, I, "Please go pick it up." And I'm picking it up, and the lady's packing it up. And I was like, "Yeah, so, it's great." And she heard me say I never win anything before. So, I'm like, "So, you know, how many were in there?" And she was, you know, kind of like flipping through, and then she like changed the subject. And I brought, like, I really wanted to know. And I was like, "So, how many were in there?" And, um, I, I don't think she really knew or counted. I really think she just felt bad for me. Because she could not tell me.
She picked you out of a hat.
Oh, that's too funny.
Raffle, it was really a raffle.
1301. Yeah. Price is Right rules. Whoever's the closest without going over. Of course, she couldn't tell me. But, uh, it was great. It was, uh, it was the highlight of...
Jen, you wanted to add something?
No, the only thing I sort of, I would have liked to add is that if they're consolidating sort of the space, it's also, I would love for them to consolidate the, um, the program, because I think having, they had some really good ones on Saturday, which I couldn't make. But also, I would have liked to send some of our senior staff to, like, maybe one or two. But it's really hard to ask somebody to go in on a Saturday at 2:00 for a sort of this professional, if you're not doing the whole training. But there was, you know, there was a couple that I think some of our staff would have driven in in an afternoon, taken in afternoon. It's not a huge time commitment, like two or three days, and then not your weekend. So, I think they might get a bigger crowd of sort of senior staff that would be going in too harsh.
Or if they shift it to Thurs...
That's the Thursday day.
Full day Thursday and full day Friday.
Yeah, it would be nice.
And get rid of the Saturday.
Well, they could do all their other, like, they have their meetings and breakfasts and all of that. But I feel like in terms of getting more people to participate, because there were a few that were, looked really good, and they were on the last session.
Make sure you fill out the survey.
I was gonna say, is there a mechanism?
They always have a, yeah, they have a survey, so...
I do think that would be helpful.
Yeah, there, there were some good ones on Saturday. There was one or two that I sent in, so...
Yeah, I was a little disappointed, yeah.
Yeah. Great, okay. Any other comments or questions? The other thing to remember is, they also, you should all be getting emails about upcoming virtual sessions that they have. They do their new Select Board event in the summer that is still informative, even if you haven't. Yeah, okay. Okay, moving on. To vote the accept proposed change to the BA grants and Select Board Community Grant Programs. Hold on a second. Were you waiting for us, Rob, to do something, or...
No.
Oh, okay. No, we're gonna do that at a... I should have emailed you back. We're gonna do that at a separate time, but I'll get back to you. Okay, okay. You're welcome.
Good to see you, Rob.
Good seeing you.
Take care. Okay, moving on. Vote to accept, we still have time, yes? 15 minutes. Vote to accept the proposed changes to the BA grant and Select Board Community Grant Programs. Brandy, please.
Hi, so I get to follow the Lego story, okay?
Tough act to follow.
Tough act to follow. So, um, back in December, you guys might remember, even though it feels like forever ago at this point, we had talked about some, some minor cleanup changes and edits to our BAA, um, grant and our, our community grant policy. So, what we had looked at back in December was sort of a redlined version. The two main changes that we were making, one was that we wanted the community grant to specify that it's for nonprofit groups, because we did have a for-profit business that had applied for it back at our last grant round, and we had never really addressed that in our policy, so we added that to our policy. And then the other part of it was to specify that the programs and the groups that are applying for these grants should either be Ashland residents or benefiting the Ashland community at large. So, specifically, so we're not looking for outside groups to come in and ask for grant money for things that don't benefit the Ashland community. And then the rest of the redline changes were really just more, just cleanup, because the first time we had proposed these changes, it was a whole new kind of way of structure to look at it. So, I kind of consolidated a lot of those changes. So, the only thing I was looking at, so Susan, thank you for giving everyone sort of a clean version and the redlined version. The only thing that I saw, like, in the clean version, we still had something in there on the, on the, the third paragraph under background that just had the balance of the gift account. I think we should probably just take that out, because it's old, stale, stale information. So, that balance and gift account number as of 8:30, 1:23 should just...
Be removed from the, from the, from the policy.
Strike that from the policy. Uh, just that part, where the, where, it's good to say that, that it's funded by hotel room fees in lieu of taxes at the Warren Conference Center, but just the balance of the gift account, just, that's just stale data, so... And then, that's really only, the only change that I had in this. I just wanted to see if there was any other questions or things that... This way, this way, when we go to open up the grant cycle, the next grant cycle, we have a clean, a clean policy. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I just, no, I wanted to say thank you for doing that, because, you know, when we worked on the grant awards in the fall, you know, these issues came up, and I appreciate your... You know, we tried to do what we felt was the intent of the committee, but it certainly is a good thing to have it written into the policy, so thank you.
Yeah, well, it's always good to be updating these things, considering what it was 12 years ago.
Right.
Yes. Yeah, well, we need to vote the policy, because we discussed it at our last one. So, if I can get a motion to accept the BAA Marathon Runners and Grant Program Policy with the one update made.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries 5-0, and a thank you to Brandy and to Claudia for the work on that. We greatly appreciate it. And I would say at our next meeting, we'll vote to open the grant round as of March 1st, right? Okay, so... Okay, moving on. Okay, this is a discussion, and then this will get moved to our next meeting for an actual vote. Even though it's a pretty straightforward one, I like to keep it so that if people are hearing this discussion, they hear our discussion and know that at the next meeting, we'll vote it. So, this is disposal of surplus property. Jen, is this something you want to take us to? That'd be great.
So, just as part of the procurement laws, um, you know, that usually, um, really, when we're talking about procurement, it's about us purchasing, you know, equipment or services, and we have to follow a certain set of rules, depending on what type of service or construction we're following. Under 30B, when we have property that we no longer need or can use, um, you know, could that, so that could be vehicles, that could be furniture, we really need to have a policy on how we dispose it. So, this sort of outlines what we would do for things under, you know, if we're determining things are under $10,000. We would, this just sort of lays out that we would reach out to other departments. Potentially reach out, and if there's no use for it, then there's, there's a process that we would follow. So, we can sell it, we can auction it, we can, it allows us to still do trade for vehicles. And that is really it. So, and then, obviously, for higher, higher estimated amounts, which frankly, I, I can't think of ones that we would have, when we start to dispose of equipment and furniture, it's usually pretty well-used. So, to like sort of exceed $10,000 feels like a, a stretch. There is, you, you can do a bid process, and you have to take the highest responder. We are able to possibly donate to nonprofits, and we would just, so I would write a memo to the board, and they would just say that that's okay. So, that's really... So, this just allows us to follow the process.
With, with any auction items as a result of this, this policy, does that money go back into the general fund? So, if it was a pickup truck from the DPW, and it was auctioned off, it wouldn't go to the DPW line item, it would go directly into the general fund? Okay.
But if they quoted, if they were going to get a vehicle, they could quote a trade as part of that.
It's part of it.
And this, this sort of, this formalized our ability to do that.
Okay, so you can still do that, use that as a trade-off?
Yeah, and so, it just isn't required us, just because that's auction.
Yep, okay, thank you.
I have, I have a question about the policy. I'm sorry, did I? Yeah, and I don't know if this is housed here or somewhere else, but when you're talking about surplus, uh, surplus, uh, surplus property, if there's anything that may have held PII or any other sort of data, are there any sort of policies and procedure that, that dictate that that information is wiped or certified in some way, that, 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 that's not available? Because if not, I think that needs to be added here. If you're talking about computer hardware, software, phones, those sort of things, I think it's just important to have that provision if we're not... I don't know if it's somewhere else, but I just didn't see it in the document.
Yeah, is PII personally identifiable information?
Yes, it is, yeah. And any other kind of sensitive information from the town that we would, obviously would not want distributed?
Yeah, I think, I think there are some policies that, that are housed within sort of our IT that might speak to that. I know that they, we have computers, we go through IT.
Right.
Anything before it comes to us for... But we could certainly, I will definitely have a conversation, so we can confirm it and sort of determine whether we just want to reference if they have an actual policy or if it's just practice. And then, if not, we can sort of add it if we need to.
Is it still like, image it, is that?
I'm sorry?
I, I think they would, I think they called it imaging, image it?
Oh, oh, you mean, the, the process of, of wiping it, yeah. And so, re-imaging, you know, like, you know, basically just resetting the OS or whatever, you know? I mean, they're different terms, but, um, but yeah. And I think also, just, if it's, if, it may not even be a specific IT item. I'm even thinking about any sort of, any sort of place where data may be housed that you may not want out, whether it's like a vehicle, because, you know, there are computers in everything now, so it's not just, you know, a desktop or laptop or anything like that.
If they're using the GPS in the car and it stores people's home addresses, anything like that.
Exactly, it extends beyond just, like, computer equipment. So, I think if we could specifically address that, that would be a good thing to do.
That's a great idea, and if not, if it's not in another policy, we should probably create it in another policy and then reference it. Yep, any other... That's why we discuss before we vote. Good, okay, great. So, you'll let us know what you find out and if there's changes, and then we can review that and vote it at our next meeting. Wonderful. Okay. We're still not at 8:30. Okay, so we've discussed that. Couple of reminders. The winter parking ban, no on-street parking from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM is in place from November 1st to March 31st, so be aware of that. And certainly, it is more strictly enforced when there are weather incidents. So, if there's overnight snow or ice and the roads need to be done, so...
But, you know, I did notice that last time, the snow that we had, it must have been vehicles, well, there was obviously vehicles that were parked out in front of Town Hall along this street here.
Hopefully, they receive tickets.
Yeah, and, you know, we've, we've actually talked to the chief recently just about ticketing in general downtown. And stepping that up, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think outreach is important for a step, right?
Right. I would also, I mean, I think one of the, some things that needs to be addressed is, you know, as we said, one of the issues that's going on is we have a couple of buildings that might have extra people there with vehicles that are not parking in their buildings.
That's exactly what's happening.
So, now, there's no overnight parking in Town Hall, correct? Is that something that needs to be looked at? So that they're not on the streets or in the public parking lot across, um, on Front Street? Can they park overnight there? Because I'm, I'm all for ticketing people, you know, and, and if they're used to parking, but if we are not able to give them someplace else to park, is that something we need to...
I mean, yeah, I mean, it, it, are we looking at, actually, this is, it's a great question, because as we're looking at certain things, we may want to look at permit, resident permit parking, parking and making, you know, those public lots available, you know, for those snow emergencies for residents.
Right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's okay, that's, that makes sense.
I think, you know, so, so at a practical level, I think, you know, allowing people to park in the parking lot is okay. Like I said, from a practical level, because in the morning, theory being that they leave.
Right.
Right? The thing, just like with a mixed-use building.
Right.
So, like I said, in practice, I think it's okay. In principle, I think, kind of what frustrates a lot of people is that a lot of residents too who observe this is that, you know, when these multifamily buildings are parking, are permitted with a limited amount of parking.
Right.
You know, it's, it, it's not, it shouldn't then be, I, I don't think up to the municipality unless there's an explicit discussion about it to provide overflow parking.
Right.
And the theory, again, is, is that the market should dictate what happens. So, if at 128 Main Street, if you've only got 1.5 parking spaces per a unit, and somebody has two cars, like, guess what? They might not want to rent there.
Right.
And so, the rental, you know, amount could, you know, potentially come down to make it more attractive or marketable.
For one person to live there, right?
You know, so...
I mean, another possibility is, you know, generating revenue for the town by renting those parking spaces to people, to residents, who...
Potentially.
You know, that's another potential thing to look at, if that's what it comes to. But, you know, just getting cars off the street when we need to do snow clearing and for public safety purposes is important, so...
And I think from a perspective of, right, if there's, there's no on-street parking from 2:00 to 6:00 AM, and we want to have them cleared. So, if there's a snow emergency, is it the kind of thing where we say, okay, during a snow emergency in particular, we can open the lots or not?
Right.
And that might be a discussion with the police chief, with Traffic Safety Committee to say, okay...
And planning, because, so, you know, we're thinking about things in the here and now, right? And kind of the demand, but 10 to 60 Main comes online.
You'll have a similar incident.
Yeah.
And with a larger, larger scale.
And even if you open up a lot, I mean, and this is true, I think, of lots of apartment buildings and that, too. They tell you, you gotta have your car out by a certain time, because you need to clear the lot, too.
Right?
Well, and that was another point I wanted to bring up. Sorry for interrupting, Claudia, is, you know, Doug will tell you. I mean, sometimes we'll delay opening Town Hall, so Doug and his guys can get in and clear the lot.
Right, right. And if there's people parked here, then there's an issue, yeah, okay.
A question, a question and a comment before we leave. So, the question I have is for state roads, like 135 and 126, they, they're not supposed to be, theoretically, they're not, there's not supposed to be parking on those anyway. But like, if there is, like, are we responsible for ticketing or towing those? Or is the state, uh, okay?
Yeah, tow, yeah, even for towing, Joe, can we do that? I mean, I know we can ticket.
I mean, I can't... I can't think of anywhere on either road that there is on-street parking.
Oh, it happens. I, I will, well, I will tell you about it.
It might happen, but there's no official parking, right? There's no parking spots or anything like that, so, okay.
And you're also right, Joe, I'm sorry, Makita, 135 is actually, for the most part, a local road.
A local road.
It's 126, alright.
On 135, there's pieces of it that are state.
Okay.
Get me started.
Just like codeable road. Codeable road is actually maintained by the state.
Okay.
And so, is the, is the 1.54 parking spaces per unit something that we need to consider changing?
I think with some of the current stuff that's going on at the state level in housing, they're actually looking at not, either, they're either looking at reducing the number of parking spaces per unit or saying things like, you can't not permit something. There's a lot going on with the discussion of parking in regards to what you can approve.
Well, there's discussion going on, but in the meantime, we're living it, right?
Right.
So, is that...
Perhaps we can take a look at what other cities and towns are doing around this issue and come back and discuss it later, because I think, instead of trying to reinvent the wheel, that might be the best way.
It's called tag and tow.
Yeah.
The two Ts.
And I think, I, I think to Makita's point, I think we, we're gonna need to, we're gonna need to talk about some solution, because...
For downtown.
For downtown and, and, you know, maybe, maybe there's like an alternative site somewhere where we can have people park. Whether it's, I mean, you know, like, we were just talking about 135, you know, the lot that's across from Seasons, you know, maybe there's a way that we can... But maybe there's some sort of arrangement that we can, you know, strike. I'm, I'm just trying, I, I think we need to anticipate.
Certainly something we'll need to discuss. Certainly something we'll need to discuss, it is eight thirty, so we need to open, but I think.
Yeah, just quickly, maybe in terms of around here too, can we make some kind of an agreement with the state and the MBTA lot? And be able to move cars there?
That's an idea as well, that's good.
Okay. Moving on, hearings before the board, notice is hereby given that the select board will conduct a hearing regarding a change of manager at Clock Tower Pickle LAC. The proposed new manager is Steve Przynski. Clock Tower Pickle LLC, two hundred Homer Ave, Ashland, Mass, zero one seven two one. A public hearing will be held on the matter on Wednesday, February twenty, uh, February fifth, twenty twenty-five, at eight thirty PM. Persons wishing to be heard on this matter are invited to attend the public hearing in person or by logging into the Zoom meeting. Interested parties who are unable to attend the hearing may submit written comments to the select board's office, Town Hall one oh one Main Street, Ashland, Mass, oh one seven two one, or by emailing Susan Roby at Sroby@ashlandmass.com. I move that we open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, perfect, all those in favor of opening the hearing?
Aye.
Aye, perfect, Susan, do we have anyone from?
Yes, Steve.
Perfect.
Uh, I'm here, Steve Przynski.
Great, thank you, Steve, good, I would say good to see you, we can't see you, but thank you for being here.
I know, I don't know why, I need to apologize for my voice, I have strep throat and laryngitis, sorry.
Oh, no. Yes, it's a lovely stuff.
I apologize for my voice.
That's okay, okay, so, uh, who is, so Steve, you and Macy are here to talk about in favor of this change. We have information in our packet about the change of management. Uh, Steve, why don't you take us through this, please, or Macy, if that's easier for you, Steve?
No, that's fine, I'm happy to do it.
Great.
So, um, we had a change of, of our manager of the liquor license, as well as the manager of Clock Tower Pickle Ball, where Marissa is no longer with us, uh, in a very amicable, uh, transition. And I felt it was best for me as the primary owner of the Clock Tower Pickle Ball to take over as the manager. I am there, uh, uh, almost not every day, but a lot of times. And Macy is our manager now, and she's there at least forty hours a week. And, um, I just felt that was the best way to go about this, as we continue to, uh, go through what we're doing at, at Clock Tower Pickle Ball.
Okay. Okay, Susan, anything else that we need to know from you? It looks like we have everything.
No, everything is in order, and we did not get any comments from anybody.
Thank you, I was just gonna ask that, thank you, Sue.
Have you all been inside Clock Town Pickle Ball? No?
Yes.
If you have the opportunity, you should go check it out, it's a great space. So, okay, uh, the footprint.
We would love to host all of you to, uh, Clock Tower Pickle Ball, so you can bring your friends and play pickleball.
I think we need to have a board, a board pickleball game.
There we go, a board pickleball retreat, ooh, that could be fun.
I have several friends that are members, but, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I hope they enjoy it.
They love it, actually.
They do.
Have to look that, look into that, okay. So this is just a straightforward change of management.
Yep.
If you don't know, Steve, he's been, he used to be a member here in the community, very, you know, was involved in a lot, and what they're doing at Clock Town Pickle, Pickle Ball is, is a, is a, is a great thing. How goes it on the kitchen, Steve?
It goes good, we, um, so we're gonna slow play the kitchen quite a bit, because we're trying to figure out, you know, how many people are gonna be there, so the important part is to open up the bar, which is actually gonna be done within the next week. And, um, what we're finding is, uh, there's so many people from the town and from the surrounding areas that come there and play, and they just want to hang out afterwards.
Yeah.
And I know we have our liquor license right now, but it's just gonna be a better environment.
Yep.
And it's, uh, we have a hundred and seventy members now, which is great. Um, just getting everyone there, and the town loves it. And the one, so, again, excuse me for my voice.
No need to apologize.
The one thing that we are really doing with this whole operation is making a community. We do not want to be, you know, what's on Route nine on, on those guys, we want it to be a community. And that's what we're, that's what we're doing, so we're very excited about our, 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 our path, where we're going. And, uh, we're just very excited about it, so it's cool.
Great. Great, well, that's great to hear, so, uh, if there is, is there any other deliberation by the select board on the approving of this change of management? We're not changing anything on their license or anything they're doing, footprint's the same, it's just a change of management, any other?
No, no, the, the bars open, I'll be down.
Okay.
I can't wait.
And it's, and Steve, I just wanted to say, so my, my, my son is, is a senior over at the high school, and he was there last weekend for, um,
Oh, made a great event.
the fundraiser that you guys were doing for, on behalf of like the class of twenty twenty-six, so when you talk about community, I'm glad you've, you've, you're, like, that, that's, that's really important, and my son is a big pickleball fan, so, he, yeah.
They, they had a great showing, and I will tell you, one thing we're doing with everybody that wants like a donation or, uh, anything, that is the fabric of what we're doing, is to bring people in, community, give them stuff, and just, just because you gotta understand, just this, this, what we've created is so exciting, and people love it.
That's great.
I gotta tell you, people love it.
Love to hear that, love to hear that, good.
Or nothing but good stuff.
Yep, okay, if there's nothing else to deliberate, if I can get a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. If I can get a motion to approve the change of management as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye. Great, so Steve, you are all set, we have approved that change of membership, and Brandy, I like your thinking, I think we need to get a, uh, a, a select board pickle night going. Only if there's a possibility to get taught how to do it, Steve.
So we do have, uh, Macy is actually a teacher, and she's very good at it. And, uh, we would love to have you guys up there, and we'd, we'd, uh, entertain, uh, inviting you guys on our, on our tab, and, uh, we'd love it.
Great, well, thank you so much, Steve, good luck, and continue doing the great work that you're doing there at Clock Town Pickle Ball.
Great stuff, Steve.
Yeah, good job, Steve, feel better, buddy.
Nice to have you still in town.
Have a great night.
Take care. You're back.
We'll see you guys.
Okay, thank you, Steve, thank you, Macy.
Yeah.
Okay, um, moving on to our next one, the Class Two Liquor License. Uh, notice is hereby given that the public hearing will be held on Wednesday, February fifth, twenty twenty-five, at eight forty-five PM. Oops. Oops, hold on, I can't do that one yet. Uh, moving on, we have another reminder, hold on, textile clothing recycling, the pickup must be scheduled with Simple Recycling at one eight six six eight three five five oh six eight, or simplerecycling.com, or if you are a compost, uh, customer, you can go to their website and purchase stickers for textile recycling, and you just have to buy white plastic bags to put your textiles in, you take one of your stickers, and when you put your green compost out, you can put it with your compost, and they do, they recycle it, either they pass it on if it's still in good condition, or they actually recycle the textile, so. Yeah, you just go to their website and buy the, the stickers, yeah. And if you need some white trash bags, let me know. Okay, moving on, we have our unfortunately, those don't work for the, those don't work for the textile recycling.
I was thinking about it, Claudia.
Excuse me. Okay. No, no. Uh, motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And with that, a thank you to Marcela Arjona and KG Narayana. Marcelo had to step off of our planning board, and KG had to step off of our Board of Health. And so if you're interested, those are the two seats that we spoke about earlier in the agenda. We're looking for people to fill those. Okay, Michael. But you have five minutes, YMCA update maybe, or?
Yeah, actually, yeah, that's where I'll go.
That would be a great thing, go ahead.
So, uh, the YMCA actually, actually came before the planning board, uh, for an informal discussion before submitting a formal application, and, uh, it was, I think they got really good feedback, I thought it was a good, good meeting. You know, obviously, there's some questions, uh, YMCA is not at the place yet where they're ready to submit an application. But they're getting there, um, I think they still need to do some assessments. Test for a little bit more ledge, uh, things of that nature, but, um, yeah, all in all, it was, uh, it was a pretty productive meeting. Yeah, I, I, did Pete relay anything to you? Didn't relay to me, okay, um, so, yeah, looking forward to getting that thing going and, uh, and moving forward, so. My understanding is that, you know, from a fundraising perspective, we've got close to ten.
Yep, they're at, they're at, so the, the YMCA, they're at ten million committed, based on some grants as well as some true funding from different organizations, they're looking to do the next ten million to get to the twenty million, which is about half of what they're expecting the base area of the YMCA to be. Depending on what they decide to do when will determine the full cost. And so that second half, that other ten million is where they're at now, they're trying to talk to, again, some higher-level donors, as well as some different corporations. And then potentially come to the planning board for site review, starting in sometime middle of the spring, so April, May, March, April. Uh, with moving that forward, and then potential shovel in the ground sometime in September or October.
Yeah.
Depending on where the fundraising goes, so. Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, so one thing I want to point out is that, as Yolanda mentioned, they're thinking about it, you know, in phases, so constructing the, the first phase, which is like the gym and the, essentially the community center, the early education center. Um, and I think they're proposing potentially two more phases, which involve swimming pools.
Pools are one of the more expensive items.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
But what they're gonna do is they're actually gonna go to the planning board and actually get the whole thing permitted.
Right.
So they don't have to come back for each phase.
So that as they get the funding, or as they start the first phase, so that they have the, the, the permits for everything, as they get the first phase done, if the fundraising then catches up to be able to do the second phase, they can just flow right into it without having to get more, more permits and approvals and just have it all done, so, yeah.
So that's good.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, we're gonna, well, they're not here anyway, right, we're pushing, okay.
Presenting.
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna jump it.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we're gonna continue this, so, um, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, February fifth, twenty twenty-five, at eight forty-five PM to review a Class Two license modification. The current Class Two license allows for the sale of used cars at seventy-three Waverly Street, Ash, uh, Ashland, Mass, and they are requesting to increase the number of cars allowed at that location. This is New Beginning Auto Services, Inc., Jose Padilla, seventy-three Waverly, Waverly Street, Ashland, Mass. Persons wishing to be heard on this matter are invited to attend the public hearing in person or by logging into the Zoom meeting. Interested parties who are unable to attend a hearing may submit written comments to the select board's office, Town Hall one oh one Main Street, Ashland, Mass, or by, uh, or by emailing Susan Roby at Sroby@ashlandmass.com. I can get a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
And a second.
Enthusiastic.
Okay, um, so here is a statement I've been asked to read, it has come to our attention that the applicant potentially requires zoning relief for what is proposed, and the Fire and Police Building Department have a number of comments related to public safety which need to be addressed before the board can take up the matter. Therefore, I will retain, we've opened the meeting, we've opened the, um, hearing, I entertain a motion for the board to continue this matter to April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven fifteen PM.
So moved.
So moved, okay, so we are now, um, we have so moved in a second, all those in favor of moving this, uh,
Continuing it?
April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, at that meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have now postponed this till April sixteenth. Is that all you need from us, Susan, did we do that right? Okay, thank you. Um, so, I mean, we have the information in our packet already, but I guess there's questions about the parking lot and how they want it to be configured, so. Okay. Great, so that will be moved to April sixteenth. Wonderful, okay. All for that. Okay, going back to Town Manager's Report, fiscal year twenty-six budget update, Michael, please.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I don't have too much information, or too much new information. I will say, though, that the governor's budget did come out, and it, uh, did not do us any favors, so. In fact, actually, it looks like in total, when you look at the state, uh, state aid, it looks like we might actually lose a little bit, or if we do have a gain, it's a little.
Increase in, that they've said?
It's very, it, yeah.
But by the time it gets through the legislature, we'll probably.
Typically, you know, you know, typically what happens is the House will add a little bit more to it, the Senate will add a little bit more to it, and generally, they go with the Senate numbers, but, you know, they do, they do usually key off of the governor's figures, um, so if you start low. I know. So, yeah, that was a little bit, um, unfortunate, so we'll, we'll see how that, you know, that process at the state level evolves. Brittany and I are just trying to, you know, kind of get together, she's really kind of been swamped with a couple of other things, but, um, just trying to just look at the budget in general, and, you know, we got the department head submissions and everything, we're looking at that, and I think having the tri board meeting is, uh, set is really good. It's, it's gonna be, you know, tough, I think, for us to kind of move forward until then, until we have a sense, you know, how do you want to address the deficit that we have, you know, do we want to look at cuts, do we want to look at, um,
Have you been able to reset, reschedule the, um,
The department head meeting?
Department heads meeting?
Not yet, not yet.
Because ideally, if it could happen, do, do we think it, ideally, it would happen before the March first?
Yeah, I'm hoping for February fourteenth, but I'm just, I didn't want to put that out there, so, um.
It just, if, if, when, when you know, like, I, if, the sooner the better, it just takes some arranging for me to, if it's during the day, I have to give enough notice, I have to provide coverage for the other thing I do that's not here.
You mean the things that pay for you to be able to do this? There you go. Let's put it right out there, Makita, come on.
It's legit, so, um, we could do it, Joe, I don't, yeah, so I don't.
Actually, that, that option, if there is an option for that, that might be something that I'm, depending.
Yeah.
It might be a little easier to swing depending, I don't know.
Yeah, you know, it might be a little clunky, um, but. Yeah, how, how, how it could be a little funky? Yeah. Oh, yeah, but, um.
Yeah, we'll have to talk about, yeah, okay.
But, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, until we have that tri board meeting, get a sense of where everybody wants to go, in terms of how to handle the deficit, we're kind of, you know, a little bit at a, at a standstill.
Right, right.
Which is okay.
The next week is school vacation week.
Yeah. Yeah, the calendar, calendar's tough.
The other thing is to do it the day before the March first meeting, but if there's input or stuff like that, it could be tight to.
It could be tight, but like, even next week is tight.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, yeah, as soon as we know.
Yeah.
Very helpful.
Yeah. And I'm just, Makita, I'm just trying to think of an alternative, like, if, you know, you can't make it, or you can't hop on Zoom or something like that. You know, another thing that you had mentioned is kind of, um, tangential to the budget itself, but you talked about the three hundred million in Chapter ninety?
Yes.
That the governor filed, so, uh, this is actually a pretty significant win. Been a little critical of our governor, um, but I will have to say that for two decades now, um, there has been advocacy to try to bump that to, that, uh, Chapter ninety money from two hundred million to three hundred million. Always gotten resistant, so to the fact that, you know, she actually filed that bill, I think is great, now it just needs to get through the legislature.
Because we've had a couple of other governors, I want to say Baker at least once or twice filed a three hundred million for Chapter ninety early on.
Maybe.
And it, now, I mean, I remember, I remember sitting at an MMA conference and, and hearing that before, so.
And I do remember, like, they would sometimes issue supplemental, like RAP. RAP funding, W R. RAP funding, W R A P, I'm trying to remember what that stood for, but it was kind of like supplemental road funding.
What I've been finding interesting at the state level is you're hearing two things, right? They're saying that the fair share amendment has received more funding, but regular taxes has been short.
Yeah.
And so what I, what I always get concerned about when that happens is the fair share amendment is supposed to be for transportation and education. And because the other side is short, are they gonna well, take, you know, say, okay, since we have all this money over here, rather than adding to our funding what it's supposed to be doing, are they gonna take stuff on the general side and say, okay, we're gonna move stuff over here and then just pull it from the fair, from the, I don't think it's fair share, but.
Instead of stopping the tolls after the pike is paid for, they divert it towards the big deal?
Yeah.
They would not do that.
Yeah, you know, and allowing the auditor to do what the people of the state wanted her to do? Oh, and, and they all got their raises this year, by the way, so. Yeah.
And so, yes, that, that, that's a huge win, so hopefully that will be supported.
Yep.
I just, you know, what that means for us.
We'll see.
So we get about four hundred and fifty thousand in chapter ninety-eight now, so just take fifty percent of that and add it on top.
If we could, that'd be great.
Eight hundred, and just for reference, to fully reconstruct a mile of road, at least a few years ago, it was like a million a mile, so full reconstruction, so you can tell, it ain't, it ain't going that far.
Which is why sometimes people in the community go, why have we not seen any work done on any roads? And it's because sometimes we wait a couple of years to accumulate funds under the chapter ninety funds to actually then do some of the major reconstruction, so we have some accumulated funds rather than trying to do it all in one year. Yeah.
Well, it's a, it's a timely subject because spring is coming, spring is pothole season in New England, as we all know, so.
Yeah, it is coming, so, so, yeah, that's good news. And we covered the YMCA update.
Yeah.
Before I get to the federal grants update, I'll leave that for last, but I did send you all a note about the Municipal Empowerment Act.
Yes.
And so, you know, if you could, if you have a moment, you know, take a look at that and just, I think, you know, send me your three most important points.
Michael, I have a question about that, so. My impression, and it could be incorrect, from the email, was that previously our legislators hadn't supported it and.
The legislature was, in general, was, was pretty lukewarm towards it, yeah. They didn't move it forward.
Okay, was there something in particular, or?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Claudia.
It was just not a priority for them.
Okay.
Yeah, so I wouldn't want to speculate, but it yeah, I did, I did talk to Jack yesterday just about this and just kind of, you know, take his temperature on it. And, you know, at this point in time, he didn't necessarily see too many issues with it, but he hadn't studied it too much, but.
One of the things we do have to remind them about is the current I'm not sure what the language is, so right now we can do virtual meetings, right? And that expires, I believe it's March fifteenth?
Thirty-first or fifteenth, it seems like.
It's either the fifteenth or the thirty-first of March. So they need to, either they need to pass another for, you know, kick it down the, you know, kick it down the, down the road, or they need to do the municipal empowerment, because that makes it permanent that we can do virtual meetings without making it a mandate, so that each community can handle it themselves.
And I saw that, Madam Chair, and that is the number one thing that concerned me the most about.
I mean, if they don't pass the full act, I would hope that before, whenever, whether it's the fifteenth or the thirty-first, they at least extend it. And in enough time that people who have meetings, like there are people who have town meeting in March, that they need to know, can they do it virtually? Can they not do it virtually? But on that note, we passed a remote policy. Where would I, I need a copy of that, I have to send it to somebody.
We can get it to you.
Okay, if you could shoot that to me. So no, I don't think that either of you, so we voted a remote policy that allows us, whether it gets passed at the state level or not, to do, to allow remote participation by people who are on boards and committees, and then also continue doing Zoom for participation by residents. So, you know, Joe's going on vacation and he wants to participate, he could do it via Zoom. We don't necessarily care because we have that, but from a perspective of some of these other meetings that we participate in, the ability to have virtual makes sense.
But if I remember correctly, there's one, there's one thing in that policy, you have to have quorum here to have, like, you can't, you can't you can't be a hundred percent remote, but you have, so you have to have quorum in person.
Right, so, you know, if two of us are traveling, as long as three of us are meeting here.
I think that was the only major.
And I think it used to be that the chair couldn't be remote, but I think we did something that allows the chair to be remote, I believe, so. Right.
Yeah, that's true. Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, okay.
So, but yeah, if you can get that, if you can take a look and get that info to me, or what your, what your thoughts are.
Yep.
I think it said next Friday, if that's possible. And then what I can do, I think I indicated, you know, assemble everything kind of, you know, like a position paper, if you will, that we could put forward to the legislature. Okay. Do I have to do this next one, federal grants update? Well, you know, I, I think I think it's fair to say everything is fluid right now. I think that's probably the most optimistic way of staying it. So just as background, all of you know, President Trump signed an executive order that froze all federal grants and loans, which didn't necessarily clarify anything. I think, you know, Office of Management and Budget issued a very, like, cryptic is probably the best best way to describe it memo. Obviously, put everybody a bit in a panic, because just at a local level, for example, we are depending upon a number of different funding sources, not just for one-time opportunities that we've taken advantage of, like the UCC property that we just purchased, which was going to be partially funded with a six hundred and five thousand dollar grant, which was a federal government pass-through. But then we also have funds and grant funds that flow through to help with operating expenses and salaries and things like that, and so we obviously did not know if those were in jeopardy as well. So obviously, there was quite a bit of consternation as that went forward. I think, you know, fortunately, the courts intervened, and at this point in time, that looks to, they have intervened and put essentially a halt or restraining order on that order. So right now, it looks like that money should be flowing. My understanding, though, is that all of it hasn't necessarily started flowing yet. It's extremely scary because we have somebody, it, it sounds like at the till, literally, you know, deciding where the payments go, or who gets paid and when, who is essentially not an employee, although I think he's been designated as a special employee and really has no government experience whatsoever, although he is a very, very wealthy man, his name is Elon Musk. And so the fact that he actually has access to treasury and has the ability to impact payments, and my understanding is that the intent is to bring in a lot of Silicon Valley, Silicon Valley, not silicone valley, Michael. Although, although and, you know, basically, AI is going to be the efficiency savior of the federal government.
Hey, hey, Michael, before we, we go down that path, I just want to roll back to what you, what you started with, because I think that our residents want, I think they probably want to get an idea of the scope of if, if this injunction, for some reason, you know, doesn't stay, or if some other mechanism is used so that these funds, there may be a delay in these funds, et cetera, et cetera. Just for clarity's purposes, what, you said that there are a number of staff positions that would be impacted? What specifically, do, do we know specifically what those impacts, like, we can even just say departmentally, and how that might impact resident services to the town? I think that would, that would be helpful to.
We're, we're collecting all of that, Makita, because, you know, I do know, like, human services, I, I am sure the school department has a number of positions. Do you remember if Kirsten's position, the DMH grant is like a pass-through, like from federal funds? So like our, you know, our social, yeah, jail diversion person.
Yeah, so, I mean, it sounds like you're on the, on the case and trying to compile that information right now. I think, you know, no matter what happens, I think it would be a good idea to make sure that we have a clear idea of what, what could be impacted. And it may be, like, maybe partial impact, depending on what happens in the courts, depending on what happens, there may be partial impact, no impact, et cetera, et cetera, but I, I feel like we, as a community, need to be ready to communicate specifically if something comes down, what, what that means.
Right.
And what, if anything, we can do about it in the short, mid, and long term.
Yeah, so, so the plan is, you know, we can, you know, we'll assemble that list of everything, and in that way, as things move forward, like you said, if it's partial, we'll just, you know, we can highlight those, right? These are the ones that are going to move forward that we know of right now. But it's just, it's it's, it's, it's kind of it's kind of tough, just, just in general.
Well, it's a bit of a moving target, right?
It's a moving target.
You know, what was the, the original executive orders, and then the injunctions, and what injunctions? I did receive an interesting email today that actually had some of the executive orders in it. If people haven't received that, I'd be happy to pass them along. And I can forward that email to you, I started looking at it, I didn't get the time to look at it in detail, I think so we can understand.
Right.
What are some of the things they're talking about, but also understanding that there are states and different municipalities and different places that are pushing back on this.
Are we getting anything from the state? Like, are they providing any guidance as to like what some of these?
That's an excellent question, Brandy, have we heard anything?
I mean, I know that programmatic.
Pull your mic a little closer.
So I think some of our programmatic grants, we've reached out to our grant managers, so sometimes Michael's point was, sometimes we were getting the grant from a state agency, but it's really a federal pass-through, and so
Right, right.
We're calling our state grant project manager, looking for guidance, and they're also sort of trying to figure out what all this means, and they're looking for guidance from the federal government, and so it's a little bit of a trickle-down, and we're not getting a ton, not because they don't want to provide it, but I don't think, because they know. And so it feels like everybody's like in the same boat of trying to figure out, like, what exactly, yeah, does this mean? But I know that the staff that I have working on grants, they've been out, outly reaching out, it was that first day, sort of, lots of things were kind of locked up, systems kind of weren't working, and so you know, they're, they were just trying to figure that out.
Because I would hope, I would hope as things become a little bit less chaotic, maybe, that we would get some sort of higher-level guidance from the state, down to municipalities, to say, okay, this is, this is how it's going to affect this level and that level, and because, I mean, even when we were talking to MAPC and they were talking about the, the
Grant used to do the project, yeah.
For, for that, it's, you know, we're not probably affected by that, but there is a lot of, there's a lot of things that are in the mix, like, you know, if there's other grants that we've applied for, but we haven't gotten funding for, I mean, we talked about the land grant, but.
The funds coming to the school, to the.
As well as the schools.
That's the biggest one, I mean, we were anticipating millions of dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, so specifically, right, we, we're getting six hundred thousand dollars to put towards a purchase that we are already under agreement with.
Correct.
I mean, we have a contract that we have to come up with at six hundred thousand dollars.
There was no contingency that said if the grant didn't.
There was no contingency to say, oh, by the way, if the president decides to say, sorry. And then additionally, three point two million dollars in tax credits from the government, from the energy savings like things that were put into place in, for both the MINDUS and the Public Safety Building, three point two million dollars, six hundred thousand dollars, just, those are two, right? So almost four million dollars right there.
Just a start.
Just to start.
Just to start, so. And then there's also, just to follow up on your point, in terms of people, to think about people coming to work now, wondering if they're, how long they're going to be paid for, and whether I've seen a person be laid off mid-year because the grant was pulled or whatever. And it's just, it's amazing that we're not, and we're not talking about one person, we're talking about many people in this town, and probably hundreds of thousands across this country who are in this position.
It's wide-ranging, systemic impacts that will directly affect the quality of life for our residents. So that's why I think, first off, thank you for, you know, getting this information together, the more that we understand it, the better that we can go back to our constituents when we're being contacted, and I am being contacted about this, can explain the situation, and, you know, we can do what we need to plan for, whatever we need to plan for.
Yeah, it's a.
I was just going to say, you know, to that point, like, could we make sure it is a standing item on our agenda for the next
I think that's a very appropriate idea.
Trump administration update?
Well, just.
Well, no, federal funding, federal funding update.
Yeah, and just, and impacts on, on Ashland.
I mean.
We could potentially have like a administration update, I mean, we're talking about like a hazard mitigation thing, we're talking about grants, I don't even know if FEMA is going to be around.
This is a very good point.
That was actually on my list to ask him, like, what happens if FEMA disappears? But honestly, like, you know, Martin from the MAPC is, is like, you know, he has zero, he can't answer that question because nobody knows, but but I think, I think if we have it as a standing item on our agenda and we're addressing it, like, even if, even if, because we know it's going to be fluid and we know it's going to change, and, you know, it's
we have to let, contextually, and this is not a political thing, this is an operational thing. We owe it to our constituents and our fellow citizens to let them know what we know, and, and let them know how we're, you know, trying to you know, put any sort of mitigation planning in place, or at least make sure that we are a source of, as well as we know, accurate and up-to-date information about local impacts on these issues. Because there's going to be, there's also going to be a lot of mistake, I'm going to say, I'm going to give people the benefit of the doubt, there's going to be a lot of, like, mistaken information transmitted, there's going to be a lot of, you know, speculation. I would like our residents to be able to depend on us to provide accurate information as we know it on this issue.
I would just say, right, I mean, even between when we heard this and even today, we keep hearing changes, so what I would say to residents is, what I would say to residents is, we will keep discussing this, we'll work with, with staff and, and to get the best information as we're sitting there, knowing that within a day, or within a week, or within a couple of months, some of this could change, and I think we just need to be very aware of not only this stuff that's happening, but other stuff that's happening, and work locally to ensure that we do not lose our connection with our residents and with what democracy looks like in our country.
Well, so, you know, we talked a little bit about, you know, state officials, I will say our, our federal delegation has been very engaged.
Yes, they have.
I did, I was on a call with Markey's office, you know, you know, letting them know what we did know at the time in terms of what, what was impacted, and of course, they've. And of course, they've, you know, they've committed to working, you know, they say all the politician things that they say. And, you know, so we'll see if it actually does anything. But, you know, at the, and so, you know, it's very clear, kind of like the operations going forward. We do have a president who feels this is the way to operate, issue an executive order. See what sticks. That's exactly it. See what sticks. And so we're dependent upon the courts in many cases to identify, you know, where he is potentially overstepping and basically taking steps to do that. Where I get worried, you know, what's that old saying, possession is nine tenths of the law? So, you know, if a court does decide to issue an injunction, they don't have operational control. So you can still have somebody who is not pressing the submit button on the payment. And what does that mean? And, you know, you do have, and I don't mean this from any kind of political standpoint, but you do have a president who is probably the most well-versed in criminal law than any other president we've had before and, you know, knows those boundaries to push, you know.
I think just kind of rolling back to what you had said, the one thing that's going to make this a very kind of destabilizing situation is that, in a very real and practical sense, the courts can issue injunctions, et cetera, et cetera. But at this point, we don't know if that button will actually be pushed or not. And I think it's important, again, this is a communications issue because people will be like, well, the court said this, so where's the money? And we have to be clear with them and say, yes, we know that, but the button has not been pushed.
Right.
And if there's no federal employees there, right, because we're hearing all kinds of things about federal employees, either losing their jobs or early retirements or, I mean, we've, we've seen it here in the state when they did early retirement for people working in certain departments at the state level, where then design review things, instead of taking six months to nine months, took a year and a half. When they did it for mass, for DOT?
Yeah.
Yeah. Back in 1314, when we were working on getting Route 126 approved by the tip, we had our 25% design, we were working with people at the state level. And because that was, it was around that time when they said, okay, we're doing early retirements. And they laid off, you know, they had a number of people retire. And all of a sudden, they were telling us, well, now we don't have enough staff to keep this on track. And we lost a year, or thereabout, and pushed our whole project back. So I have a fear that we have to be conscious that this could happen at the federal level as well.
The other thing too is it isn't just a matter of the courts issue this and then it's a matter of the confusion that it creates.
Oh, definitely.
That nobody really knows. Does that mean I should push the button or no, that's not me?
Exactly.
The confusion is crazy.
That's why the communication is important. So like, you know, I think what we can do is just try to, you know, keep in touch with our state and federal officials. Make sure that we understand, we understand what the situation is so that we can provide that, you know, or echo that information and make sure that, you know, our neighbors here in Ashland have the information that we have. And so that they understand what's going on. Because at the end of the day, you know, folks are going to be like, well, I depend on the food pantry or like what's going on with the daycare, with the kindergarten situation or like what's going on with the roads or what's going on with my water or what's going on with this. We need to make sure that people understand what's happening, how it's happening and what we're doing, if anything.
And what we can control.
What we're doing about it, right.
And what we can.
And what, exactly. And we have to just be very clear about that so people understand. But I hope that folks understand that no matter what happens, that we'll be working very hard for the residents of Ashland, regardless, whatever comes up. Like, that's what we're here for. That's what we're going to do. And we're going to do our darndest to make sure that we continue to serve this town and its residents. To the, exactly, so.
And I know, like, I know, you know, so far, like, I know you've been contacted by people. I have received over 30, like.
Wow.
Correspondence, phone calls from residents.
Was it before or after your letter went out this weekend?
So some of it was before, which kind of prompted what I put out there. But then, you know, they're just, they're trying to figure it out. And, you know, right now, everybody, it's so, still kind of new, so everybody's being kind of gracious and, you know, patient.
Yeah.
I think, but, you know, at some point, that tensions are going to fray and.
Oh, yeah.
That's why, that's why I'm suggesting, and, you know, I think we've talked about communication here in the past. There's, there is a very strong possibility of a lot of misinformation and disinformation around these issues. And we have to get ahead of that because anything less than that is going to be a disservice to the folks of the town. So I think at some point, maybe in a future meeting, like, we need to pick up that conversation and talk about how we're going to work to mitigate that, especially given light of current events. Because it's critical that our townsfolk know what's up.
Yeah, it's, that's a good point. And I just want to, you know, we've been working on like a communications.
Yeah, plan.
So Jordan and Beth and I, and so I think we're meeting to review it next week. And then we'll talk about it at a select board meeting. Probably won't be ready for February 19th, but probably one of the ones in March. So it'll be a good time for, it's kind of all coming together.
It's converging.
Can I recommend that once, before you bring it to the select board, if you have a, you know, draft, right? Maybe send it out so we can take a look at it and give you feedback. And then you, Beth and Jordan can sort of review our feedback and see.
Oh, that would actually be ideal.
Right, that way you're not bringing it to us, right? If you, if you get, you know, if within the, if by the end of the week, you think you'll have a draft, send it out to us, let us take a look at it, you know, and then we can all reply separately to you. And then you can look at that information and see if there's changes or tweaks or whatever that you want to. You know, and then you can either maybe talk to whoever sends you the information and then you can present it to us and then that way, I think it might be a little bit better process.
It would be great to have like a first round of that kind of done before.
Before you come to us in a meeting, because it's tough sometimes, so.
Yeah, it might not, we may not have enough time to, so, and that's a fantastic suggestion.
If you email it out to us, we can do it on our own time and review it.
Yeah, and you can talk to, you know, me about it.
Right, we can have questions or comments or discussions. Does that make sense to people?
It makes sense. And I will just say this before you've even distributed the plan. I'll say that, you know, I think we have to, you know, we'll have to think about like, not just when, you know, the mechanisms to disseminate information, but also, you know, how, not just select board, but like how town employees can handle information requests, you know, and make sure that, you know, how do we keep everybody aligned with the same information in realist time so that we don't have conflicting information going out into the community? Just something to think about while you're putting together those plans.
And just to that point, like, just, just hearing Makita say that, like, it kind of, for me, maybe we need to approach this like we did COVID and have like a task force.
I would agree with you.
That really handled, sort of like was the central of all the information. And I, I don't know, I feel like this might be that scope that we need something.
Specifically about the federal funding and how it's impacting. It's not just our general marketing.
Yeah.
I mean, our communications plan.
Right. I'm just throwing that out there because.
I think that's a very good point.
Because, because that might be the scale that we're talking about with this, that we need to kind of think of it as, I want to say a crisis, because it.
Well, I mean, it might, it could be, but, I mean, I think we just want to make sure that we have that mechanism in place should we have to kick it into gear.
So only because, again, it's not, not, I mean, it's somewhat on our agenda, I mean, it is on our agenda, but more of a grant update. So what I'd like to recommend is we're going to put this on our agenda again for the next meeting in February. As you have thoughts and ideas, certainly think about that. Let's look at this communications plan that we get from Michael, Beth, and.
Jordan.
Jordan, thank you. And give your feedback back to Michael. Think about a task force idea, what would that look like? Maybe we can discuss that at our next board meeting to see how we want to handle that. We can add that as an agenda item.
I think it's a great idea by doing that because now you have a central, centrally located point of contact where all that information is funneled into that, into that center. And then people can grab that information instead of piecemealing here, there, and everywhere. It's localized. It's right where it needs to be, which is what we did with COVID. We had one point of contact person and all that information was provided to that person and it was disseminated out to everybody in that one way. So, yeah, it's a great idea.
Because also, you know, you think about it, this will have impact on the schools. This will, like, so it needs to be.
Wide-ranging systemic impacts.
Right, every, every, every department in this community and not just Ashland, but everywhere, everywhere.
Couldn't agree with you more, Joe and Brandy. I think that was an incredible suggestion. I think that's where a good place to start.
Okay, great. Okay. Anything else, Michael and/or Jen? Okay, it is time for board reports. Makita.
Hello. So I would unfortunately like to share that I have been pretty sick over the past couple of weeks. So I haven't been out and about, but thank goodness I'm on the mend. The one thing I will share is that I, we did have a committee, subcommittee meeting to talk about the process, the committee selection process and recruitment and process and such. So we've got another meeting that will be posted soon. Right now, what we're, again, we're just doing some discovery as it were, trying to make sure that we fully understand the business process or the process end to end before we can make any kind of recommendations about improvement. And we're obviously talking about all the stakeholders in the process right now. So that work continues and we'll be able to provide an additional update because we'll have another meeting coming up soon, so.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd absolutely like to wish everyone here in Ashland and Farfield a very happy Black History Month. It's February. So it's a great opportunity to study, study up about some of the contributions of African-Americans that have helped make this country great. African-American history is American history, so.
There you go. There you go. Great.
That's all I've got.
Nice. Claudia?
Yes, thank you. No, just a couple of things. I've had the occasion to go up and not personally skate on the Warren Conference Center rink, but my grandchildren and some friends, and, you know, it's really nice. It's, it's well-lit. They have lights all around it. They have a fire pit. You know, where you can get warm. They, you know, the restaurant, Henry's Place happens to be right there, so you could actually go inside and have a little drink or refreshment while your children were skating. So it's really a nice spot. It looks great and appreciate it. And, you know, where the process for building the new structure is coming along. And I know Jen's been very involved with that. And then I did attend the school committee budget meeting two weeks ago, I guess. And, you know, it was what we've really been hearing in terms of, there are some challenges. A lot of, you know, costs have really skyrocketed in terms of, you know, inflation has hit everything and things like the out-of-district costs for students has been really skyrocketing. So, and then there was a lot of discussion, this was, this meeting in particular was focused on the preschool, special education and Mendas. And the thing with the preschool was a big discussion really about whether or not that school should be servicing, try to meet the need in the community. Currently, the building is too small to really do that. It does meet the need of allowing the school department to service students with special needs that are very, that require intervention at three years old. And then that allows us to, you know, educate them in our, in our state, I mean, in our state, in our town. But then we have, in terms of typical students, we have many, many, many on a waiting list every year. So, you know, there's a little, little conversation about what the future might look like. And I have to say that it brought back some sour memories for me in terms of a preschool that was attached to the high school when we first lost that.
Twenty-eight votes.
First vote. And that we would have had a preschool, very nice preschool with a program for high school students to be involved with and, in any case, so.
Twenty-three years ago.
Right, so.
Twenty-three years ago.
So in any case, so the school department is working very hard to manage the challenges that they face, like the town faces in general and our friends and neighbors face. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia, and thank you for going to that meeting. Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I signed up for a, an online forum and discussion with respect to the quiet zone development and what cities, what other cities and towns are dealing with when it comes to that, to that specific projects. And one of the big issues and concerns and the discussion will be with the liability aspect of it, which was what we discovered over the, over the years in trying to get our quiet zone completed. So I'm looking forward to do that.
When is that?
It's next Tuesday, I believe it's one to two. It's online.
Who's doing it?
Oh, you had to ask me. I had it written down. I left the paper.
Is it Mass DOT or?
No, it's not Mass DOT. No.
Okay.
It wasn't Mass DOT.
If you find it.
Was it DOT? Well, it could, it could, it could have been.
If you find it, if you could forward it to me.
Yeah, I'll forward it to everybody.
I don't know if I can sit in on it, but I'd be interested in listening. Okay.
Yep, I'll forward it.
Anything else, Joe?
Yeah, a couple of quick things with respect to the road traffic study committee. We've been working very diligently on trying to assess the issues that are concerns with the 1060 Main Street. We have drafted a letter that went to the ZBA earlier today. And I would be more than happy to forward that, that letter to you all. I don't believe we have yet, but I will forward it to you all with respect to that. All the concerns that you folks met with Jeff were discussed in this letter. And hopefully, he'll understand that some of the concerns that we had with their traffic study report. Again, statistics can be used to be, you know, before or work against you. So we were questioning some of the information that was provided to us in that report. And we're doing our own at the same time, so hopefully we can get a better handle on what's going on. And again, the concern is with the residual neighborhoods that'll be affected by the traffic flow and those folks not wanting to come down here. So cutting from Winter Street all the way back to, you know, Coeur d'Or Road in Winter, you know, cutting to Strobus Lane and all these side roads, Hildale, Strobus Lane, coming so they can get beyond that to get to their destination on Badger Road to get to Route 9 and the Mass Bike. So we've been dealing with that. And I'll be coming to the board and to Lisa within the next, next three weeks, maybe two weeks when I get back regarding putting signage up on Merrill Street with respect to weight limitations on trucks. Because there is one right now on Badger Road. So we would like to, we would like to keep it, you know, similar and the same on both, on both, both aspects. So we'll be coming back to you folks on that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, so Tuesday, February 11th, the ZBA is having their next meeting regarding 10 to 60 Main Street and their discussion will be on traffic. Okay, Brandy?
So the major thing I have to report is that we, the comprehensive plan group met two weeks ago, I think, at this point.
Twenty-second of January.
We discussed some, so, you know, we had gone out with a survey on specific strategies related to the goals. And we had these technical working groups right before the holidays, so.
Hold on one second. Mackie, did we get bumped from cable? We're no longer. I just want to make sure we're still going out live via cable. Okay, because we're seeing a channel guide and. Okay, I mean, we're almost done, but still, if we're still going, it would be good for the public to be able to watch us if that's what they want to be doing on cable. Okay, keep going, Brandy.
Okay, so we met as a comprehensive plan group to talk about the strategies. There were some strategies that didn't rate very high in the survey where people weren't super supportive or the technical working groups. So we met as a group to kind of go through some of those strategies. Our big meeting is gonna be on March 20th. We're no, we're not gonna meet in February, partly because of school vacation week, partly because our consultant is really gonna be doing a lot of the real heavy lifting between now and March to give us a whole, basically to, to pull everything together so we're weighing in on all these strategies. That, I think, is sort of like the last big task before we start writing this thing and start drafting this comprehensive plan. And then, of course, the goal is, is really to finish it and, sorry.
We'll get there, Brandy, we'll get there.
Sorry, I'm a little, I'm like, I'm, you know.
It's been, it's been a long haul.
The edit function in my brain didn't quite make it there. The, so the goal is to, to get this to, to, to fall town meeting. So we are, we are working on it, so.
So there, there will be more public input once we have some of these strategies pulled together and.
And the drafts and things like that, so we have that. And the only other thing I wanted to, to remind people or let people know that, I think it was mentioned, I don't know if Claudia mentioned it or Joe mentioned it, but in the town clerk's office, nomination papers are available for folks thinking about running for office this May. Anybody that is interested to, to run for office needs to get nomination papers, get, get 50 signatures, and turn them in to be on the ballot for May, so I always recommend.
And all the offices that are up for election are on the town website.
Yep.
So you can look at that, okay.
And just as the winter season is, is finishing up over at the high school, I just want to wish the, the, the clockers, those that are going off to states, best of luck. Because winter, the winter season is short and it is ending, so.
It certainly is.
Hard to believe, it's not even, it's just February and the winter season's over.
Yeah, and stay safe in the snow, guys, we're having, we're gonna get some weather this week.
Tomorrow, yep.
Just take it slow.
That's it.
It's called, it's Go Rail.
Go Rail, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, perfect, thank you. Okay, couple different things. So we received an email from Arthur, the gentleman who came and talked to us about NIPS. I did reply to him, I've forwarded to you guys what, some discussion that we can have. I've started some discussion with Susan. So I think we can either decide either next meeting or the meeting after to see, is there things we can do based on his input? Let's see, senior breakfast was missed in January over at the community center, they are having one tomorrow. It might be too late if you haven't already signed up, but otherwise, I believe they are back now the first Thursday of the month. We already mentioned ZBA. School vacation week is February night, the week of February? Eight, no, six. Monday is the 17th to that week, so. President's Day, yep. Our next board reunion meeting will be Wednesday, February 19th, so we'll see you then. A couple of other events that I've been notified about, Ashland Education Casino Night is happening somewhere in March. It's always a fun event, I saw that they're now, that's, so it's held at the Warren Conference Center in their lodge. I was there, I think, pre-COVID, I don't know, I was a couple of years ago. It was a lot of fun, they've expanded it to two floors. It's, if you, if you're not busy, it's a great fundraiser for AEFI, it's always been a fun event. Also coming up, I believe later in March, is library mini-golf in the library. Also, if you like mini, mini golf, they've set the course up through the stacks and, oops, throwing things.
I, I was there last year, that is a delightful event.
It's a fun event, it's a fun event, so. And the, not, again, not for tonight, but just for discussion, we should start talking about new select board office hours.
I was also thinking about that this week.
I saw that the library had their book sale on Saturday, and I'm like, oh, we've done that, so let's start thinking about that. Maybe next meeting, we can sort of set a couple of dates. And I have some ideas on that as well, based on one of the sessions I attended at MMA. I believe that's all I have. So if there is nothing else, motion to adjourn, we have a move in a second. Thank you all, if I can get a, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Thank you all, that ends this meeting. Again, our next meeting is Wednesday, February 19th. Stay safe, we are expecting some weather, we don't need to go past 10 o'clock. So thank you all who have sat in. And remember, if you have any questions or comments, don't hesitate to reach out to any of us. And if not before then, we will see you on Wednesday, February 19th for the next select board meeting. Thank you and good night.